Everybody, my name is Art Whitman. I'm chairman of this Shaffsberry Select Board and I'd like to call this meeting of the Select Board to order at 5:31 on Monday, May 17. First order of business is, does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
No.
Probably I should have said this the very first thing is that under other business, we'd like to talk about Cole Hall opening and possible public meetings and so on and so forth. So, but I don't think that should affect anybody. So, we will continue with minutes. We have, did you circulate minutes for?
Yeah, minutes was circulated for May 3.
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes for May 3.
So moved.
Ken?
Second.
By Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Was that it for minutes, Dave?
Yeah, there was only the one set.
Do we have some warrants?
Yes, let's start with this one here. I'll put it up on the screen as soon as it loads. Okay, this is payroll warrant 23. And that's for $26,094.68.
So moved.
Thought moved by Tony, second by
Second.
By Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Payroll warrant number 23 is approved. 500, I think.
Yes, 500. This is water warrant number two. For a total of $252 and $252 even. And that is for the town water bills. The town office. The fire station number one.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I will.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carried 500 for water board, payment to the water board.
I'll bring up the next one. This is a check warrant number. I need my glasses. Check number 35. That'll be for $38,279.62.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Okay.
Second by Ken. Any discussion? What are some of the major items?
We have a Blue Cross and Blue Shield, 9200. The Benton County Sheriff, 2100. Brookfield Services, 633. That's annual service agreement. That one is for the fire department. Maintaining the generator. Few small ones from Quick Gravel and Land Development, which is gravel. Let's see here. Usual list of Green Mountain Power ones. Innovative Surface Solutions, 4200. And that's the chloride for the gravel roads. LNG Fabricators is for the fence that was damaged in a car accident. That's 1225, which is being reimbursed by insurance. 1543 to Nimerick, which is to pay for the assessor who is working with the Lister's Office to produce the grand list. There were normal TAM charges, 8200. We have 1350. Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, which is our municipal roads general permit.
Okay. Any further discussion?
What's that? Quick's gravel and land development, Dave?
They're at Eagle Bridge. Mike just bought some gravel from, and we got some fill for the cemetery from them.
Okay, I never, just never heard of before that was all.
No, I had to check it too because I'd never heard of them either.
Any other comments? All those in favor of warrant number 35, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Warrant number 35 is approved, 500. That is on warrants, Dave.
Yes, that's it for warrants, Art.
The one announcement I have, and maybe others have another one, but we are desperately in need of an animal control officer. As is Arlington and maybe a few other towns around us. So, if anybody is interested or thinks that they know of something that might work, please get ahold of Dave or myself, or even get ahold of the town clerk, whatever. The message will get through to us. So, an animal control officer is quite desperately needed. And it is a paying job to, I don't know if you're going to get rich, but there is a steady flow of money into it. Anybody else have any other comments, announcements? Public comments, anybody from the public? Okay. Melanie, you're up, I guess, with the treasures report.
Yep, hi, everybody. If we could take a quick look at the cash flow. The interesting number here is the delinquent taxes. That's virtually all that big $43,000. That's virtually all from the back taxes on the the house in Shaffsberry Village that Dave calls it gray and I call it green. What, on 7A? What is? I don't know what the address is. But anyway, so the back taxes were paid on that. I think it's going to tax sale. And so that's what the majority of that is. That puts us in a better position with delinquent taxes for this time of year than I think I've seen my my whole time in this position because that particular building has been hang over ahead for a long time. The credit company error you see there, negative $6. That was just something that a screw up of municipes. Their third-party vendor charged us, charged all of their clients a fee that they shouldn't have. So that's going to be reversed later, but so that's what that's $6.21 is. If you want to go down a little ways. There's the town water bills that you just approved. Already paid those. I was going to say about the payroll, nobody questioned it, but it's quite a bit higher than usual, but that's because of Mertz fees from that great big delinquent tax bill. It isn't, it isn't some kind of, it isn't overtime in the highway department or anything, which is usually what drives payrolls up that high. So I just wanted to make a note of that. Let's see, go down a little ways. So that's our cash right now is really, really a very healthy amount of cash for this time of year. People's United Bank reached out to me today to see if we were going to be wanting a line of credit. And I told them I was going to keep a close eye on this, but I don't think we're going to need one this year, just because of the sort of one-time revenue that we've had, that we've talked about many times before. But I think we're probably not going to need to get a line of credit. Assuming always that I can get the tax bills out in a timely manner, which as soon as I've got a a grand list, we'll be able to set a tax rate and then, you know, we'll be able to go with that. Let's see, I didn't do the budget comparison because it's not an end-of-year report here. So if you want to just look at reserve accounts real quick, I don't have much to say, but what you'll see is that the only thing that's going on is the water, because the water bills are out there right now. So every day I'm processing a couple thousand dollars worth of water. Is that coming? Let's see, I've got mine. Yeah, there you go. If you look at the 260 line there, that's, so that's just in May, we've already gotten $16,000 of the water bills that are out there. And they only mailed a little while ago. So those are coming in very helpfully. That's pretty much all I've got to say. Oh, if you didn't get your homestead declaration in today, you are late, but you can still do it with a little bit of a fine. It's, there's still plenty of time before the tax bills are printed. So you can still get the benefit of the homestead declaration. You just might have to pay a little bit extra. Because today is a cutoff, and I think you can't still get it to the post office. But any questions about any of that?
I guess my only question to Dave is there's, there's nothing that you wanted, want done that didn't get done. Is there, as far as as a budget item, a line item in the budget or anything?
No, everything, the actual, what we're looking at here is was planned to recover from the prior year where we spent a large chunk of our reserve in road maintenance. And this was kind of planned out to work this way to make up for that amount of money, to bring it back up to what the voters approved, 15% by the end of the year here, the fiscal year. So, yeah, we are in really good shape because we do have this extra cash. Like Melanie said, we probably won't have to take a loan either.
Good. Any questions from Melanie? Okay, as always, as always, thank you.
Thank you, guys. See ya.
See ya.
Next on our agenda is, I want to introduce you to the most energetic librarian I've seen in Bennington County in a long time, Jenny. You've got some news on what's happening at McCullough Library, I guess.
Goodness, yeah. Well, thanks, Art. So, first off, want to thank you all, Select Board, and all the people we serve from Shaffsberry. From here at the McCullough Library, live and in person. So it's always been just such an honor to serve this community of like readers, explorers, thinkers, lifelong students, and creators. It's just really inspiring. So, but the big news I have is that the library is will undergo some planned renovations this summer. Mainly to do with our restrooms that are the renovations will make them accessible for folks who have mobility challenges. The upstairs restroom just off the children's room will feature a changing table, which is an amenity we do not currently have. Hot water downstairs. Currently, the restroom is at the back of my office, and it is very much a water closet. So, and not very accessible. Not a lot of people know it's there. So public restrooms on both floors, a water fountain on the second floor. A complete and up-to-code rewiring of the building, which is something very desperately needed. That's, that came to our attention this year. And work on the Lauren Novak Meeting Room, which turns the, a very large closet on the second floor into a laptop bar and small meeting room. So you and five of your buddies can get together and have a meeting in this room, which is currently just sort of inert space. It's used to hold empty bookshelves and stuff. It's just not a very good use of space. I'd like to emphasize that this project is being entirely funded by generous earmark donations for projects specifically like this. Bequests and grants, including a $10,000 educational facilities grant that came from the state of Vermont, from the Agency of Administration. So there's no tax money involved with this project. And that our very popular curbside book pickup service, I'm so glad we have this tool in our toolbox right now. We can make the collection available even through construction. So that will continue to be the standard of service through construction, which will likely take place this summer. We're hopefully going to begin in mid-June. And this will take us through mid-October to get all these renovations in place. And so you can still get books. We're still doing virtual programming. Our summer reading series promises to be really exciting. The theme's Tales and Tales, so it's animal-themed to keep our kids reading through the summer. And hopefully, we will have a welcome back weekend with tours. Cake, hopefully, because the library turns 100 years old this year. Yeah, it's a 100-year-old building. And that is, you know, that's kind of some of the reality that we're up against. We have a 100-year-old building trying to deliver very current service. So things like the wiring and the plumbing, stuff like that. A few years back, we had our furnace, which was irreparable. Like we had to go a whole new furnace and oil tank. Systems like that will continue to be sort of a thing for a while, but we're trying to get ahold on it. And there, currently, this job is out to bid. The folks at Goldstone Architecture have the bid documents. And there is a pre-bid conference here. It's optional tomorrow morning, which is the 18th, Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock. And I will, 10 o'clock? Let me check my calendar here. It is tomorrow morning, though. 11 o'clock, 11 o'clock tomorrow morning, pre-bid conference here at the library. So if you are interested, stop by if you're interested in taking on this job. But that is kind of, it's very exciting. This is stuff that people have asked for, and we know that we need to deliver on. And part of a, like a three-phase plan to work on the building, which includes updates for the children's room, that's the next phase. And the final phase is an elevator from the first floor to the second floor. Just to bring us up to compliance with the ADA requirements. And fire safe staircase, all that stuff. The stuff that 100 years ago, they weren't really counting on for a public building. So yeah. Exciting stuff.
It is exciting, Jenny. Any comments from anybody? I don't think there's anybody from the public, but does any of the Select Board have any comments or anything?
I was wondering, what was the building originally, 100 years ago when they built it? What was the original use for the building?
A library. It was, yeah. It was built, previously, there had been a three-four, three-story boot and shoe factory on this corner. Actually, a lovely building. But this was a purpose-built library that opened in August 1921. And it was, you know, looking at the original blueprints, which we do have, it was really of its time. And had a lot of room for people, not a lot of room for the collection. The whole second floor was a program and event space before children's services was really before people really understood the importance of that for children. They had opera singers and movies upstairs. That closet that we're converting was a projection room for films.
Thank you. Jenny, I'll say I've enjoyed the library for all the years I've lived there. I've gone there since 1969. So I've been and out of there quite a bit. I really enjoyed it up until probably I was around 20. And I got into my 20s or so. You just get busy with life. And of course, the library became a thing of the past, but I always drive by and look over at it. And I do, I miss the library. I can't imagine, though, where, or how they would put an elevator in there. And secondly, would that hurt the, I mean, would the historic society have anything to say about that or no?
So we will, the elevator, it would be an addition on the back of the building.
So it'd be an external?
Yes, an external addition to the back that we hope would be in keeping with the character of the building. We haven't, we haven't gone to a design review board or anything like that yet with the designs. But as it is, we do have grandparents, for example, who can't get to storytime upstairs, or children we serve who are in wheelchairs and can't get to the second floor. It's, yeah. So.
You need to put an espresso bar upstairs.
With the kids?
For people like me to bring me back.
Well, we hope you'll be able to come for our welcome back weekend. A celebration in October, hopefully. You know, stay tuned for that. It's, you know, we look forward to being able to invite people back.
Is Cindy still there at the library or no?
No, Cindy has retired.
Okay, good for her. She was a part of that for a while as well.
Yes.
And Guli Hendrickson, she was the lady that worked there before you, an older woman. And she was my next-door neighbor, actually. And she's out in Colorado now with her children. But she does, when I talk to her, she does mention the library, you know, and how she enjoyed working there.
Oh, I'm glad I had the opportunity to meet Guli before she moved.
Yeah. Her granddaughter did well, too. Not to get off point, but you know, she became an Olympic ski jumper. Her granddaughter, I'm sure she might have told you about it. Anyway.
Okay, anybody else? Well, Jenny, as always, keep up the good work and we will support you as best we can.
Many thanks. And if you need books or eBooks, or coming soon, video streaming through the library. Come see me, give a call, send an email. Happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Jenny.
See ya.
Next on our agenda, we need to bring the public up to, up to speed on our transfer station. We have been working under a contract that was drawn up between TAM and the town of Shaffsberry. And that contract is about ready to expire. The in the TAM selling to Casella, we are now dealing with Casella on a new contract. Casella was did honor the contract to TAM. We had worked out with TAM. So now we're dealing directly with Casella on how we will run the transfer station in the future. There are two different bid proposals. One is that we turn everything over to Casella. They supply the manpower to run the place. They would collect the money, the tipping fees. The good thing is, is that we don't have to worry about it anymore. The bad thing is, is that we will have no control over it. They will run it as they see fit. We will have to, obviously, if there's something very wrong, we are, we have a line with the manager, or something like that, but it's, it's it's one possibility. The other possibility is that we control everything, which means that there will be no more dual workmanship there. Right now, one of the employee, one of the employees that's there is paid by TAM, the other one, or Casella. The other one, Shelley, is paid by us, whereas Dougie is a employee of Casella. So the new, the other proposal would be that we would take control. We would have to have two people there. Not all, not because it takes two people, but because we have to have coverage when somebody is sick, vacation, one stays off, that sort of stuff. So the, the amount that it would cost us is about a wash. It doesn't make much difference whether we let Casella do everything, or if we maintain some control. Or actually, we maintain all the control. One of the the parts of the contract is that we are charged every time they come and pick up a container, when a container is full, they come and pick it up. It's a flat fee just for picking it up and hauling it. And then there is a fee so much per ton for what is in it. By us having control over it, we can, we can hold off calling them to pick up a container until it is full, because it costs us, if they come in and every, every couple of days and just pick up half-full containers, we have no control over that. And they charge us the flat rate for the hauling of it. Whether it's full or empty. So that's one of the advantages of us being in complete control. And it's also, we would also like to change the way it is set up in that we would be able to have people walk in on a deck that is on, above some of the containers, and they can throw down into it as opposed to having to climb a ladder and so on and so forth. So kind of would like some public opinion on this, but I don't see anybody from the public and kind of want to get some response from the Select Board as to what they think is the best way to go.
Well, Art, I think that having, you know, some eyes and ears on the ground there is very important with, we do have some sort of control, you know, a good at least we'll be able to get feedback from what, you know, from people to, you know, find out what's going on, if anything is going on. And they'll absolutely be able to monitor and make sure that the job's being done the way it's supposed to be. And
I agree. Some people say, let's get out of the trash business altogether and let Casella do it. I, but I think there are advantages for us staying in control, at least for a while. And these are only one year. I think this is just going to be a one-year contract. So if it doesn't work, we can, we can talk about it again in a year. It's not like it's cast in concrete.
Right. And two, it's not a money thing either, because either, either way we go. I mean, whether, and if it's not going to cost us any extra to have that, you know, to have our eyes there, that would be great.
It could be a money thing if they are taking containers that are not full.
Right, right.
We would maintain control of that by being in charge.
Wasn't there some issue with one of the containers that was being, was overflowed and Casella wasn't picking it up? Are we going to get penalized because we're not allowing them to take control?
I guess Dave will have to answer that. I'm not familiar with that.
There have been occasions where, and this goes back to TAM also, where especially the smaller recycling container hadn't been switched out in time. That would be part of our management responsibility to bring it closer to the edge, but make sure that it gets switched out. Worked into our agreement would be they need to respond within a certain number of hours of a phone call, or actually more like a day. Call them on Tuesday at the end of the shift and say it needs to be swapped out, because they always have a day in between openings. So it's really inexcusable for it to open up with a full container. The other advantage is with the deck we're proposing, you would be throwing down, which would allow us to have a much, much larger container for both paper and, and these things. They can't put that in. I'm waiting on a price form. and, and these things. They can't put that in, I'm waiting on a price for it for the larger container. Uh, but they can't put it in the way it's configured now, so it's something we can work on. But uh, as Joe was saying, the cost, and I can bring them up if, if you want to see them, they are nearly identical. We're talking about a couple of thousand dollars swing either way, which we can easily manage with uh, with managing how many containers. It's the swap of the containers that will drive the whole thing up. The contract, if we go this way with Casella, was, is more like a pricing agreement to last for one year. And we'll have to get it, uh, you know, agreed and, and the attorney reviewed. But we'd just be agreeing on what the charge is to pick up the various types of containers and what the tipping fee is with those scales. And uh, I think I brought up that one of the things we would be doing away with is C and D. Because uh, there's no way to accurately, accurately weigh, and we pay by the tonnage on that. So that would go to uh, Bennington, or it could go to Sunderland, Casella. They told me they don't care which one. But we don't have a scale, so there's no way that's going to work out for us. Uh, I also spoke with him about the white goods, refrigerators and all that, and that would be done the same as it is now, with another container. And that wouldn't even be removed very often. We don't get that many of those things. But yeah, it's basically about the pricing. The big jump that everybody will see in this is uh, overall, uh, just like everybody, we're going to have to start paying for recycling now. Uh, and we'll just absorb that cost, but no one's taking recycling without paying for it, because there isn't a market for most of it. Um, so that, that's, when you see it go up by about fifteen thousand dollars compared to what we budgeted, it's just because now in twenty twenty-one fiscal twenty-two, uh, it's no longer free. Nobody really wants it now.
Uh, on the C and D, a customer or a Shasbury resident would take it either to Bennington or Sunderland, but they would pay Casella directly there, is that right?
That's, that's correct. Just like, you know, and it, it's hard to remember in this weird system we have now, where we have a Casella employee and a town employee. Every time you went in there and paid for any of the services, whether it was a refrigerator, a couch, C and D, you weren't paying the town of Shasbury, you were paying TAM and now Casella. They were always collecting the fees for that. We never did. Uh, so thi- this is the, the biggest change is really behind the scene. We will be collecting all the fees and paying, paying uh, Casella uh, for everything at the end of the month.
Does anybody on the board think that we should wait for the public to weigh in on this or, or uh, go ahead and start negotiating?
I haven't heard anything from the public, uh, anybody.
Boy, it'd be nice to get a response from the public, you know, um. Well, one other thing too, when you were talking about uh, to build a deck around the, the, the uh, containers, you're, you're, we're still talking about stairs anyway, right?
No, you have to have a ramp, you have to make it ADA. In, in the original plan that, that I made for the place, we was going to be very similar to how Casella has it in Sunderland. Uh, the technical advisors for the project said, no, this is the way you do it. It's based on something they were doing somewhere else. And uh, I, I don't think it's very effective. Uh, this is something we can build ourselves. The road crew, we have a lot of good carpenters. I've already spoken with Mike about this. Um, and we can just do it because we have those days when it's completely closed. We can knock it off pretty quickly, uh, and get it up and running, because it would be much to our advantage to have much bigger containers down there. Because again, it reduces the hauls, and that's what you're looking for in this. You need to reduce the number of hauls.
It sounds good.
Yeah, let's see, uh, um, like I said, price-wise, the biggest option. The only thing that would really tilt in the other direction is if giving it to Casella directly to manage the whole place would really save money, but it's pretty much a wash, you know, how, how it works out. Because no matter what, if we collect a, you know, fifty tons more garbage, whether we're running it or they're running it, we're going to pay for the fifty tons. There's no way around it. Uh, so the, these, these minimal services uh, would be nice on our end. We also get to keep tabs on the revenue stream. Like right now, we're collecting the MSW fees. That's what Shelley's sole job is there, to is collect those fees. And Greggy doing it for TAM, because so we don't even know what they ever collect there. So now we'll collect everything in one place and uh, uh, manage it that way. It might even turn out to have better, tighter control. Besides, we will have no more of this, like I said, these two parties working there. There'll be town employees and we can, we can have a much better handle on the place.
Does anybody have any uh, any opinion on waiting a little while longer for public comment or, or just, or just go ahead and uh, start negotiating with Casella?
I'm thinking, let's negotiate, but, but let's give them till the next meeting to comment. Maybe somebody has some suggestions. You know, there were some complaints about accessibility and da, 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 da. Uh, and so maybe, uh, you know, give them an opportunity to comment. And then, but in the meanwhile, negotiate, let's, let's move on.
Yeah, I think we have the basic framework here, because it is just more a schedule of fees. There has to be legally used out to, this is set. Uh, there has to be something they agree to for the notification. We need this container replaced. Part of their obligation has to be do it, not, oh, we couldn't get to you. No, we, it, it needs to be done. Uh, so we can easily start on that, and we can give this till the second meeting in June uh, to hear comments and make little adjustments. Because if it's just the services agreement with Casella, most of the adjustments in operation would be on our end.
Yeah, that's not a, yeah, I think just input into design and, you know, accessibility is important. That's it.
Yeah, there's been some odd things up there, like the ladder that wasn't even attached to the container that was, was different.
Well, we definitely want to provide a safe experience for people that bring their, you know, garbage there, recycle.
Yeah, and I think we'd have a better uh, handle on that. Uh, and like I said, the key to it really is the reconfiguration, which won't be very expensive. And uh, we can do it, we can even contract it out, because it wouldn't be that expensive to do either. Uh, but that would make a huge difference in the operation of the place. And I checked with Casella, because they will not put the larger containers in the way it is now. Because it's, people would have to lean over. That's the biggest problem. But once we build the new things, they'll be glad to put it in. The containers will be a little bit more expensive, but we'll have less hauls, so. Again, it's one of these things that just balances out anyway.
It sure does, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, something like this that just benefits the public more than would be a concern, um. Well, I'd say we could probably, you know, go ahead with the negotiations now anyway. Uh, you know, I, I just don't see where there's anything detrimental to the public. I mean, this is all good stuff. I can't imagine, you know, anybody saying, no, we don't want a safer experience at the, you know, at the landfill.
Yeah, and at, at the user end of this, of it, uh, the interface will be just as it's been for years. You know, it'll run exactly the same uh, by us doing it. Uh, I cannot guarantee that if it goes to outsource to Casella. Uh, they probably would not run it the same way.
Right. So that it could all be for nothing then.
So I, I think just the general consensus of the board at this time, obviously, we aren't signing a contract or anything, so just a general consensus that we will proceed with the idea that we probably would run it ourselves. Uh, we've got two public meetings where people still can uh, chime in, but it'll be uh, be the last meeting in June that we would probably vote on signing the contract. Is that right, Dave?
Yes, that, that, we have until that, so we might as well use up that time.
Okay. Everybody agree?
Yes, yeah.
Next, I guess we got the resolution adopting the new hazardous management plan. That's all been, that's been worked on by Dave and a lot of people. Uh, also, it is gone through all the channels and it is now our uh, turn to, to vote, and Dave is going to uh, read or, or show us a resolution whereby we adopt it.
Yeah, I'll just read this in art, uh, for the record here. It's the resolution of adoption. The date of adoption is May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. A resolution adopting the town of Shasbury Hazard Mitigation Plan, whereas the town of Shasbury has worked with the Bennington County Regional Commission to identify hazards, analyze past and potential future losses due to natural disasters and identify strategies for mitigating future losses. And whereas the town of Shasbury has developed a hazard mitigation plan that provides a series of potential projects and actions to mitigate damages from disasters that could occur in the town, and whereas the town of Shasbury has provided an opportunity for members of the public, surrounding towns and other agencies and organizations to comment on the draft hazard mitigation plan. And whereas both Vermont Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency reviewed and provided substantive comments on the draft plan, and whereas changes requested by Vermont Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency have been incorporated into the town of Shasbury Hazard Mitigation Plan dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas a duly noticed public meeting was held by the town of Shasbury Select formerly adopted town of Shasbury Hazard Mitigation Plan dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Shasbury hereby adopts the town of Shasbury Hazard Mitigation Plan dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one and intends to implement actions in this plan if funding is available.
You've heard the uh, you've heard the resolution, uh, do I have a motion that I sign this, or that I guess probably one person can sign it, uh, because of COVID? Is there a motion to adopt this? Oof by Ken, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, this adopt, this is adopted uh, five zero zero. Can just one person sign that, Dave?
You know, I believe so, but I, uh, as soon as you said it, I began to think, some of these things, they want everybody to sign. So I'll check with uh, B C R C in the morning. And if we need other signatures, I'll, I'll email everybody, just stop around Cole Hall and, and sign it. You know, it, it, it doesn't even, wouldn't even have to be all five, it would just have to be three.
Okay.
Uh, but that rule is, is still in effect that we've designated one person to sign everything.
Okay, well, that may be, that may be part of the discussion coming up too. Okay, uh, uh, DPW report, uh, you said Mike probably won't be with us, so you've probably got it, Dave?
Yep, uh, he sent me the report for the week. Uh, Daniels Road ditch cleaning for Mountain View and Glassing View Road. Uh, runoff and future washouts during heavy rainfall. Uh, tree work is being done on Rollin Road this week. Uh, the road may be closed to through traffic if needed, and that will be basically just when they're felling a tree. Uh, they'll start ditching and cleaning uh, on May twenty-third along Rollin Road. Uh, after the ditches are reestablished, five French drains will be installed on Rollin and two existing culverts will be replaced. Uh, grading will be taking place on East Road, West Mountain, Madison and Horton Hill this week.
Horton Hill is all done.
Horton Hill is done, so we'll scratch that off.
Yep.
Okay, and that's, that's it. That's the report.
Uh, Dave, have any of the uh, equipment salesmen got ahold of Mike and uh, Volvo?
Uh, we haven't discussed the Volvo this week. Well, today, because I've been gone for the last week and a half, but
Yeah.
Uh, I haven't, I'll ask him tomorrow.
Okay. If they haven't, let me know and I'll get ahold of them.
I do know that he's been talking to salesman.
Okay.
I just don't know, know uh, any of the substance, uh, substance of the conversation so far.
Alright. If they haven't, give me, let me know and I'll get ahold of them.
Okay, will do.
Okay, um, other business, um, I think uh, earlier I stated that we would be talking about Cole Hall, the opening of it, uh, whether we want to start having in-person meetings and so on and so forth, and I see Marlene's here. Sure, Marlene has an opinion on some of this.
We've uh, I don't know if Marlene's available, so she can chime in. Uh, we've discussed it amongst all the staff at Cole Hall, and basically, we're just having a an opening of the building under the last week. Guidelines will be, as, as they say, um, if you're fully vaccinated, you can just enter the building. Uh, if you're not vaccinated, masks still are mandatory, uh, at least until that changes. Uh, this has been moved up to weeks. The, with the original plan for lifting the mask was July first, so that might change before then. But uh, we will allow people into the building. Marlene is going to moderate uh, the way people come in for research, depending on the type of research they want to do, because it actually has worked out better by people making appointments, so that two or three people don't pile up at the same time, so uh, that's one of the changes that'll probably still stay in effect, but the researchers and the attorneys, they all know who, who they are, so the, Marlene will be able to work that out with them. Um, we expect to have uh, zoning moved back in the office by the end of the week. And the rest of us have been in our office hours, the doors have just been closed, uh, to stick with the guidelines. But again, the, the main issue will be, or the main requirements are common sense. If you're not feeling good, don't come to the building. Uh, masks are still required for people who are unvaccinated, until the governor changes that, or the state changes that, we'll have to uh, adhere to that. Um, the big question comes up with meetings. Due to the nature of the Parks Committee and the Cemetery Committee, uh, these are small committees, um, they, I was going to allow them to start meeting, the weekday meetings, so that we really don't have anybody in attendance. For the Select Board, the DRB and the Planning Commission, the current amendments are, uh, we can have any number of unva- of vaccinated people. You can have one unvaccinated person per fifty square feet. So in our meeting room upstairs, that works out to fifteen people, unvaccinated people can be in the room. So I think it's a rare occasion when any of our meetings, DRB, PC, uh, Select Board has that number of people in it, so, um, I think we're pretty much ready to go with public meetings and return to the building as soon as the board wants to.
Hey, I, I'm here, guys. Did I hear my name before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Talking about you.
I'm sorry, I was doing something.
We wanted you to chime in on your opinion of opening up Cole Hall.
Uh, my plan, I talked to Dave about this. My plan had been to do an official opening for June first.
Okay.
I will tell you, I'm doing a soft opening right now, which means I'm just leaving the door unlocked, and people are coming in. Um, now, you know, one at a time. It's been good. People wait outside if they see somebody at the counter, which is very nice. And like Dave said, I will continue for the foreseeable future, really, to do research, um, appointments.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, unless there's uh, anything changes, the way um, I was reading the orders from the state, um, it's completely up to the Select Board's discretion to start allowing public meetings. Um, again, we, given the size of our meetings and one unvaccinated person per fifty square feet, we could actually have fifteen unvaccinated people in the meeting hall and it would be within the guidelines.
Any comments? What's, what's, what's your pleasure, gentlemen and ladies?
I would say June first sounds good to me.
Our, our first meeting is going to be the seventh, is that right, Dave?
I'll look that up right now if we aren't.
Well, the, the, I think the very first Monday is Memorial Day.
Yep, June seventh.
So our first meeting will be June seventh and without objection, we may, we'll meet at Cole Hall. How's that sound?
Good to me.
But while we're on that subject, we're going to need to pay some bills, because we're actually skipping a week, or is that right?
Yes, we are. We can do that by Zoom if it's more convenient for people to.
Yeah.
Uh, and that will be, sorry, I closed my Sorry, I closed my calendar again. Why don't we look at? May twenty seventh, that's a Thursday.
Six o'clock, six thirty, what's people's pleasure?
I mean, you know.
Six.
It's gonna be a short meeting anyway.
Yeah, just gonna be the bills.
Yeah.
May, May twenty seventh, six o'clock, just to pay some bills.
Yep.
I just, as a kind of a follow up. The speed sensor for Grandview, is that? Any word on when that might be available?
I'm gonna check with them tomorrow, I'm meeting Green Mountain Power over there tomorrow to look at the streetlights potential. It's funny, there's actually two lights on Hawks and only one works. So we're going to walk around and see, show them what, what people are talking about, and then we'll see how much it's going to cost and then. See how much people really want them, because it's going to change the character of the street, having streetlights running up it.
Yeah, okay. Did you put in a request for, for sign indicating a blind person?
We're working with the, the state V trans for the specific types of signs, wording, location. There's actually a kind of a choice, and we're talking with Chris over there to give us the idea of exactly where to place them.
Okay.
I also asked him if there's any kind of sideline marking that could go on a road like that to delineate a walking area, but the road's so narrow, it, it doesn't seem feasible.
And, and a grant application for scoping project, are we still within the time to get that in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's probably going to be done by the end of the week. Have B C R C is going to make the required maps. And photographs, because they all have to be submitted with the application, the application is actually fairly brief.
Okay.
I've spoken with them up at the state, so that'll all be in by, I think it's June seventh is the closing day for that.
Okay. Any other business, anybody have any comments, business or anything else? Action items, I think the only thing was is that we will have a very short Zoom meeting on the twenty seventh. We will be in person on the seventh. Six thirty, usual time, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other action items, I don't remember. Anything else, so. That being the case, I guess. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Ken and Tony, any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved five zero zero. Well, thank you, gentlemen and ladies for your evening and we'll see you on the twenty seventh, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Have a good night.